This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
It's called to order the Eau Claire School District School Board Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Secretary Iverson, have we complied with the opens meetings notification?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Could you please do a roll call to verify quorum?
Commissioner Spindler?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Cummins? Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Duax?
Here.
Commissioner Vu?
Here.
Commissioner Jean?
Here.
Great, thank you. So Communications first Superintendent Hardbeck. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. Public Forum, I forgot about that. We did not have any sign up for the public forum. Excuse me. So Superintendent's report.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
Good evening. As we do each time, I'd like to review the activities that are scheduled for the Board. On November 5th, there will be the first meeting of the Demographics and Trends Committee, and that will be at 4:00 PM here in the Administration Building. On November 10th, there will be the Non-Affiliated Staff Wage Discussion with Commissioner Spindler and Jean representing the Board, and that is at 4:00 PM here in the Administration Building. On November 11th, there will be Food and Nutrition and Buildings and Grounds Negotiations with Commissioners Johnson and Vu, and that will be at 4:00 at the Administration Building. And then there will be a School Board Meeting on November 17th. The other thing that will happen on November 17th is that the final details have been set for the Clermont Center Open Houses, and that's our near site clinic. There will be a Board Member Open House that will be held on Monday, November 17th, and there will be a tour of the facility from 11:00 to 1:00 PM that day. So if you intend to, you know, participate in that event, please let Patty Iverson know. Additionally, there will be two opportunities for ECASD faculty and staff to attend an open house at the clinic along with their family members. The first one will be held Thursday, December 2nd, from 4:00 until 6:00 PM. And the second one will be on Saturday, December 5th, from 10:00 AM until 12:00 PM.
Saturday is the 6th.
Saturday is the 6th or the 5th?
December 5th is a Friday.
So it's December 6th, right?
It's on Saturday, yes.
Okay, thank you.
What's the address of the clinic?
The... Okay, can you tell the address?
It's the old Charter Building, correct?
Yeah, it's near Walgreens.
The huge one, I think, is the new Charter, right? But I don't...
So we hope we have a good turnout, you know, for those open houses. Last time, the student representatives brought up the idea of electronic transcripts. I wanted to let you know that the principals have been working for a while on a final pricing arrangement for the online transcripts. And they've been working with the vendor to ensure that the process will be ready probably sometime right around the beginning of the new year. So I think that students could expect to have those transcripts for the second semester. And then in terms of the Common Application, that is really something that's not under the control of the school district. There is a website, and that website is www-commonapp.org/login. And students can go on that and maneuver through that Common Application themselves. So that's not something that the school district controls, but I did want to get back to you on that. And that's my report for this evening.
Superintendent Hardbeck, couldn't that link be put onto our website on the two high school pages?
Well, certainly, we could give a link from the guidance offices.
Okay, great. Thank you for the follow-up on that also. Just a few things to report from my end. So for the Board Members, the Wasby State Convention is January 21st through 23rd at the Wisconsin Center in Milwaukee. I have not attended yet, but I understand it's excellent forums to attend there. Contact Secretary Iverson if you think you'll go. The deadline really is about the end of this month, early December, if I understand right, so we can get hotel rooms and register and so forth. So if you're interested, contact Secretary Iverson. The other convention is the annual NASB Conference, the National Associated School Boards. That's March 21st through the 23rd in Nashville. We have reserved three hotel rooms for possible School Board Members to attend if they wish. So contact Secretary Iverson if you're interested in that also. And I don't know what the deadline for that, but a little bit after, a little bit further away, if I understand it right. Yes, okay. And just a reminder to everyone, the public, tomorrow is Election Day, so please remember to vote and participate in our democracy. So don't forget, there's an election tomorrow. All right. So that's it for my reports. I guess we only have one from the students tonight. Hannah, you want to go ahead?
Yes, I do have stuff to report tonight. Actually, I'm going to start by replying to the transcripts thing. I actually just found out about it today, that there was a program that was being started at North. I was talking to Mrs. Fuller, who is North's Secretary of Student Services, and she said that she was working through the program, and she had made herself an account to see how easy it would be, and so that was really good to hear. I think it's exciting for students to be able to do that online and not have to worry about mailing it in and making sure you have stamps and all that stuff, because not many people have stamps anymore, believe it or not. For other things to report on, our volleyball team was in the playoffs about a week and a half ago, and I'm kind of going to report for him tonight, I guess. Memorial's volleyball team had their last round of playoffs on Saturday in Chippewa, and unfortunately, didn't make it to state, and neither did North. But both teams made it to playoffs, which is a pretty big deal. So it was cool that our community had such great representation. I also know that Cross Country had state this past week, and there was a runner from North who made it and actually placed pretty well.
Third.
And then the Memorial girls team got first at state, so another really great community representation at state. So I'm in a group called SAD, Students Against Destructive Decisions, at North, and we did an activism last week to promote healthy decision-making for Halloween. And it was kind of a simple one. We cut out a pumpkin and hung it in our cafeteria, and then had students sign it and pledge to make healthy, safe decisions over Halloween. And then that hung up in our commons area, so people could see that their friends were deciding to make healthy decisions, and a little bit of positive peer pressure that way. And then this week, North is having our third annual Combine. It's an athletic event for strength and conditioning, and it actually got a really great turnout. It promotes health and wellness and learning the right ways to do the lifts. And then it's kind of a mini competition between the classes to see which class can get the most points. So it has, again, positive peer pressure, and it's a good kickoff to winter sports. And it really helps the strength and conditioning program get bigger and helps the athletes know that there's a trainer at North who is there to help them. So yeah, that's my report for this week.
You said that was called Combine?
Yep.
Oh, interesting.
The Strength and Conditioning Combine.
Oh, nice, okay.
I actually hear the freshmen are winning after the first date.
Yep.
All right. All right, so next we have... Thank you, Hannah. Next, we have committee reports. First, if we could get a report from Policy and Governance, I think Commissioner Duax will report that.
Yes, and I wanted to tell you, Hannah, that last year, one of my students asked me to submit my recommendation letter on that Common Apps, and it was nice to do one letter that all the schools could look at rather than my having to do five or six of them. From Policy and Governance Committee, we met this morning, and we're pretty excited to tell you that we completed the final drafts on fund balance, on high school graduation requirements, on board committees, and we started on open enrollment, subject to Mr. Lippem's report in a couple of weeks. So we're hoping to have a first reading of these drafts on December 1.
Wow, you guys have been busy. All right, all right. Thank you very much. All right. Next committee report is on Charter School, our new Charter School Committee. You want to go ahead on that, Chris?
I've got that one. We have met twice. We met on the 30th of September, and we met again on October 21st. We have members to this committee, and we have put together a program review template. And some of the things that we are working on as far as interact would be a statements of purpose of the program, explanation of program design, some of the data matrix that we're going to use to hold ourselves accountable, program review process, family, students, staff, community input, facility needs and budget impact. And I have the other notes that were taken, if anybody wants to look at them.
Great, sounds like a good first meeting. All right, excellent. Lots of energy, all right. That's what I like to hear. Good, good. I asked Mr. Van De Water to, this evening, just give us an update on where demographic and trends of facilities is heading.
First meeting is scheduled for Wednesday at 4:00. Two topics on the agenda, a review of, a recap of demographics, student demographics, and then some general information on referendums.
All right, great, thank you. And I think we've covered all the committee meetings since last time, so hopefully haven't missed any. So I think now we'll do legislative update.
Dan's words leads right into what I have to offer from the legislative update from Wasby, where everybody can find it at WASB.org. Very good, I guess people remember now. There are 53 referenda in 38 school districts on the November 4th ballot this year in Wisconsin. The number is down slightly from April 2014, when 56 referenda in 44 school districts were on the ballot. School districts are increasingly reliant on referenda to meet spending needs as increases in state-imposed revenue limits have not kept pace with inflation. The largest ask by far is in Racine, where the Board seeks voter approval to exceed the revenue limits by 8.5 million per year for each of the next 15 years, a total of 127.5 million. Amazing. And the only other thing I have that I thought was interesting from the legislative update was a little blurb on Common Core. It said, "As schools and districts struggle to find good quality curriculum aligned to the Common Core, they're turning most often to their own teachers for their instructional materials, a new survey shows," which kind of aligns with our Department of Public Instruction's philosophy of local control. So I just wanted to say that too, and as Rich says, make sure you vote tomorrow. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the update. Okay, so now we'll head to our Consent Resolution Agenda. The Consent Resolution Agenda, these items have been seen before or approved by the Board or discussed by the Board in some way. These will all be approved at once unless a Board Member asks to poll it, and we will vote on that separately. So I would request a motion to approve the minutes of the October 20th, 2014 meeting, a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of October 27th, 2014, a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session on October 20th, 2014, a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session on October 27th, 2014, and finally, a motion to approve the Human Resources Employment Report.
Can we pull that, please?
We have one pulled. So we have a motion to approve the set of four minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those?
I have someone.
I have a motion for Commissioner Duax. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Jean. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So could I have a motion to approve the employment report, and then we'll discuss that?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Johnson. Go ahead.
I just had a question, as, you know, the employment report, it gets amended several times before you get the final copy. Are we seeing more resignations mid-year than we have before?
You're asking, Ms. Marks?
I guess I want to, yeah, okay.
I think that each year, we see some mid-year resignations, whether it's a full resignation or a reduction in FTE, and that usually has to do with personal circumstances, and I don't think that this year is any different than that.
Okay, thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Okay, so no other questions regarding?
Absolutely not.
Okay, great. All right, so we have a motion to approve the employment report. I think we can just do a voice vote on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Great, thank you. Okay, so tonight, we have two individually considered resolutions on the agenda tonight. The first one is to approve a facilitator for the compensation restructuring process that we've been discussing for a while, especially after receiving the compensation plan. And if you might, just a reminder to everyone, that we had approved an ad hoc committee to look at these. I had, with the Administration, sent out a letter to those consultants and facilitators that had expressed interest in it, and I think there were a list of good, hmm, at least eight or so, maybe more, eight or nine, that we sent letters to, and we got four that responded. So we formed this ad hoc committee to look at it, and that committee, we had volunteers from Commissioner Hambach Boyle and Commissioner Duax, as well as myself. And on Friday and this morning, we did go through those using the consent resolution process that we've used, for example, to approve the Board Docs that we've done in the past. And we came to a pretty firm conclusion, I think you could say. We would recommend the proposal from the Wasby organization, what they were doing, what they proposed. The other three was Cheryl Persigil as a facilitator, it was Dick Fields, who does this kind of consulting work, as well as Batel for Kids, which I think is located in Ohio. And I don't know if you have questions, or if you would like me to describe the process we went through, I'm happy to do that. But if I could have a motion first, just so we have it on the floor, to approve this, and then we can discuss it, we can change it, we can reject it, however we want. So if I could have a motion, just to have it on the floor, it would be great. We'd need a motion to approve Wasby as the facilitator slash consultant for the compensation planning process. Well, we actually need a formal motion, actually, I think, on the Board, on the floor, to have it happen. So if I had a motion to approve that, that would be great, and then we can discuss it.
I'd so move.
So we have a motion for Commissioner Duax. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Commissioner Johnson. Okay, so any questions? Would you like us to describe it more, how we went about this, or so, or anything else?
Rich?
Yes.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jean.
You said that it was a very strong vote towards this. What were the criterias that you guys based it off of?
Excellent question. So the letter that I sent to the consultants was based on our work session, the things that we came up with, and I can read you those, and then I can read you in our ad hoc committee. So we were looking for someone with some experience and specialization on compensation work and in the public education sector, and who had some familiarity with what practices worked in those. And then some familiarity would have been nice with our district. Of course, we're interested in cost and fees, a process that would be staff-inclusive, a process that tended not to be biased to one type of model over another, and let's see, and a process that provided us summaries and had, like, deadlines and so forth. And finally, an organization that would have some resources, financial or legal, that would be available to us, or at least accessible to using ours, that we did have. So that's what we had said in the letter, and that's what I had sent, that's what I sent in a letter to them. And here's, we, in the forced consent model, we use a grid here to put those on, and here they are. Cost, one was, we didn't want someone to have too much of a conflict of interest personally. Demonstrates excellent facilitation skills, willing to get input from all levels, employees, and work for the common good. Demonstrates a clearly defined process, which involves choices and solutions for us. Understanding a background of education compensation plans, and you can remember that was one of those on the letter. Previous experience with school districts, understands history and culture of the district, and has demonstrated legal and financial expertise and/or access to that expertise. So we ranked those in importance, and then we went to the four proposals, and we individual ranked those, and through a process, compared them to how we ranked the importance of these. And I can tell you the numbers that came out. When we did the point system, Wasby was 3,414 points, and the next one down below that was Dick Fields, and he was 2,653. So like, in terms of percentage, you could think of Wasby as 164% of the lowest, of the lowest, and Dick Fields was 127%, the next one down. So those are the criteria, and those are the point systems, how we ended up with. And in your Board Docs, you can see, you know, the letter from Wasby, if you have a chance to read that. Other questions, comments? If either of those on the committee would want to comment on the process at all, you're welcome to also. Commissioner Vu?
Could you just describe a little bit more about what Wasby can do or will do for us?
Let me just find, give me a chance to find their letter. It is, I know it's hard to read right now, sitting at the Board Meeting, but we can maybe, maybe put it up there. There's the letter, and I can give you an outline of it. Probably the most important is that second paragraph, right there. They'll outline the boundaries for us as we express, you know, our values, which is something we had talked about doing, and are hoping to do that in the first meeting with a team meeting, team Board Administration, okay? And they talk about a process, have used a process to facilitate stakeholder involvement, such as, you know, mainly employees. And he gave a more detailed one in an email describing what that was, which is in your Board Docs. They have a fair amount of quantitative data that might be of interest throughout the state in terms of salaries and so forth, and of course, we have our own study to use in that. And they have acted as facilitators for other districts doing this work, as you can see in that letter. And for more about that, as they also discuss, you know, their charges and so forth in a separate, in a separate document. So that's the primary letter there. You will find in Board Docs a more detailed description of their process that they go through. On Board Docs, I think it's on the side. If you click on that, let's see, it should be in there. If you go down to the bottom, you'll find it, go down to the bottom. Commissioner Vu, other questions? I don't know if I answered it. Okay, okay. Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
I can speak to the process of, the consensus process was kind of, we had quite a discussion, taking into consideration what we talked about in our work sessions. And then we were able to really pull up what was meaningful from the whole Board, and then we were able to rate and rank those, and then take the RFPs home and really read them thoroughly, and then with the rubric we were given, we independently ranked them. And when we got together this morning, it was, I mean, the consensus was very obvious. So we were kind of, it worked really nice. And we were kind of the same thinking about the different RFPs that were submitted.
We were unanimous in our decision, if that helps. But I thought it was a good process, and we were led through that process. I'm not sure what you call it.
Forced consensus model.
Yeah, by Jim Schmidt. So we were quite independent as we made our decisions, and then we had discussion after we got all the numbers, and we were all together on our decision.
And I found it remarkable that, because the questions I had, Rich had already contacted Wasby and had them answered, so it was pretty seamless.
That's me. Secretary Iverson, could you put up the second document, the planning process one from there, please? I think it would be enlightening for the Board to see that, what, kind of the more detailed... So Bob Butler is their main contact at Wasby, and he outlined three steps they'd go through. And you could see Board Administration meeting, and this, a lot of this process here is going through the background of, like, where we're at first, and then meeting to kind of express our values as a district of what we would want to see in a plan. And if you go down a little further for me, Patty, that would be great, to the next page. You can say they even give the composition of the committee that they would recommend eventually forming after we've expressed our values and parameters for this. And you can see they have kind of a way that they, how inclusive they try to be for that committee, what they would try to form to start looking at it, and a method for selecting those committee members. So I was pleased when they had sent this to me to describe that. And there's about another page or two of that. So if you go down to step two, so that was all step one. It was district finding out where it's at, expressing its values, and then forming a committee. And the step two is the actual committee meetings. And they give an example of a typical syllabus. I'm thinking, I'm in teaching mode, typical agenda for the committee right there. So you can look at this in more detail, it's in Board Docs, but just wanted to show you some of the detail they did provide, provide us for this, so. Yes, Commissioner Vu?
So am I right that if we were to go with the Wasby, we can anticipate that there are more than one person assisting us? If we go to, if we were to utilize Dick Field, that's one person doing the whole thing?
I think he had someone who would assist. Dick Fields would have had someone assisting him, I'm not quite sure who it was, but yeah. But Wasby has several, and in his letter, I think it's in here, who it is. Yes.
There were four people that he named.
That would assist from Wasby in the process.
Do we know any one of them personally through our previous contact, in terms of communication style, personal facilitation skills?
Oops, excuse me, that's one area, I don't have, I mean, I've talked to Bob Butler before, but I don't know him personally well enough to know the facilitation skills. I did ask him that question about his background on that, and he assured me that he has facilitated quite often, but I do not know, I've never seen him do it, so that, we'll have to see how that goes, I think. Other comments, questions, or you have more? Well, this is not a committee report, so we don't take public comment on it, unfortunately. Other questions, comments? Okay, I think we'll take a roll call vote on this, if we are ready. We'll call the question. So the motion to approve Wasby essentially as our facilitator slash consultant for moving through a compensation restructuring process.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. We'll move on to the next step. We're gradually moving through this, and I'm glad we're steadily moving through it. Okay, so the, I'll get my notes together here. We had on the agenda, if I can, I'll just go here, the Calendar Committee. We discussed an agenda setting after the last work session. Remember, we had discussed Goal One quite a bit, and the various aspects of key works of that. And one reason we had put that on the agenda, because the last time in a committee report, we had talked some about start times. And one reason we had put that on the agenda, because the last time in a committee report, we had talked some about start times. And there was discussion about, oh, how do we prioritize various initiatives we could do? And, um, you know, by the end of the work session, several, several people, several board members had said, well, I, I feel like we should have a committee to look at this. And a couple of board members had said that work session. So we thought, okay, well, let's, let's put before the board, uh, proposal to have a, uh, the calendar committee look at start times in more detail. Um, and so that's how this got there, because we've had a committee report discussion already on start times. We talked about goal one related to that in the last work session, so we thought we'd try this. So, um, this is on our agenda as a resolution. If you feel like, um, this is too soon, you certainly could send it back to committee to discuss more. Or we could just, um, we can approve it to send to calendar committee to talk about it. Now, let me, uh, point out, um, if you look at, I gotta find it in front of me here. Uh, we would direct the calendar committee to consider studying the following areas with start times. The health and academic benefits of start times, barriers to implementation, uh, possible options and possible timelines, if they have any recommendations. And realize a recommendation wouldn't necessarily be, well, we recommend this option. It might be, well, we recommend we talk to more people about it, you know, maybe parents or whatever. Okay, that could be a recommendation. And anything that they would like us to give them more feedback on. So we thought this would be a start, calendar committee seemed like the right place to send this to, to start looking at it. So, uh, that's where we're at now. I, I would entertain a motion to, uh, to send this to the committee, um, or any other discussion.
Um, I so move.
So we have a motion to send those five points to the calendar committee.
Second.
Okay, so we have a second from either, we'll take it from Commissioner Vu. Uh, any discussion on this, questions, comments? Commissioner Dux?
I have a question. Has anyone talked to the calendar committee about their willingness to take this on? And who is the chair of the calendar committee?
Superintendent Hardabek, could you answer that?
So the calendar committee is, uh, made up of teachers and administrators. Kay Marks is the facilitator of the committee. As they looked at some of the proposals that they're going to bring to you for the, uh, calendar for 1516. The idea and some of the research surrounding changing start times did come into their discussion. But they did not do a formal study of it. So in, you know, if you decide to send this back to them, um, I think it's work that will fit into the work that they have already done in terms of calendar planning. And it'll be an additional factor in planning the, the calendar.
And I want to say that, um, Commissioner Dux, we did have this discussion in agenda, and I asked specifically, and I don't want to overwhelm the calendar committee, because they're working on our calendar next year. And so, um, I'm sure Superintendent Hardabek will let us know if that starts happening and certainly we can delay it some. But, um, she felt like, you can correct me if not, but they, they should be able to hopefully look at this relatively soon. So there was a, I was a little concerned about that, but so far I think it'll be okay, so. Other comments, questions about this topic?
She did the handbook, she did it.
Okay, we'll let Kay Marks do it.
I only have a clarifying question, and that, in, um, the, the five things that you're looking for here. So the calendar committee's work is within the committee on that. So it's not going out and, and soliciting input or feedback from colleagues or anybody else in district. This is solely, um, about the calendar committee members and the research and data that they find within the committee. It's not soliciting anything from any other key stakeholders, am I understanding?
Correct, correct. And then I, I could see the recommendation saying, okay, we've looked at this, we think now we need to go beyond. But I wouldn't expect that to happen now, yet.
Thank you.
And if anyone has a different, um, understanding, please let me know. Yes, Superintendent.
We did get some preliminary input from the Parent Advisory Council. And I think there was enough, uh, interest indicated in, in what changing start times would look like, um, to have a study.
But you were concerned about the amount of time where it would take to find out from stakeholders and so forth.
No, necessarily, necessarily the amount of time. I just wanted to understand what the board was directing so that I wasn't focusing the committee's work on just within the committee. And then we come back to you and you're like, well, we really thought you were going to go and talk to all these different stakeholders. So I just wanted to understand what the charge was.
Yeah, I think this is, with them first is a good start.
Okay, great, thank you.
And if anyone has a different understanding, please let me know. Okay, are you ready to call the question then? Okay, let's call the question, we'll just do a voice vote on, think on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Well, it'll be interesting to see where this goes. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to adjourn to committee. And, uh, looks like we're getting ready for the report on, um, an update on the district progress towards Agenda 2017. Superintendent, do you want to comment?
I do have a few introductory remarks. I want to remind the board that Agenda 2017 is a response to Wisconsin's request for a waiver from No Child Left Behind. Uh, and from the legislation, legislation that accompanied No Child Left Behind. And in being granted that waiver, um, there were some criteria that the state had to meet in terms of, uh, being able to promote a different plan. So, the idea and the aim of Agenda 2017 is to have every child a graduate college and career ready. And this fits very nicely with your vision of post-secondary success for all students. I think you may have been just a little bit out in front of the, uh, state in having this goal. In order to achieve this goal, there are four aspects of it, and you can see these four aspects, uh, on the board. The standards and instructions, what and how kids should learn. The assessment and data system, how do we know if they've learned it? That's the accountability piece. And the school and educator effectiveness, how do we ensure that students have highly effective teachers in schools? That's what we're going to update you on, what we have done to try to implement, uh, these goals. The fourth goal on school finance reform is being looked at and studied at the state level. And that is something that we will have to await, uh, information about. But tonight, Chris Democ is going to begin by talking about, uh, what we've done, uh, with the standards that the state has adopted. How we have implemented those into Eau Claire. And some of the curriculum decisions that we have made locally, uh, about those standards. That will be followed by a report from Jim Schmidt about the assessment piece of Agenda 2017. And the new state requirements that are in place in the new state assessments. And then finally, uh, Kay Marks will talk about where we are on school and educator effectiveness.
Uh, thank you. I think, I think tonight's presentation is all about connections. And, um, I say that because, uh, the charge that the state has given us through this waiver is research-based, evidence-based, um, good instructional practices to help our kids achieve to high levels. And what we have been doing in our district for quite some time, even prior to Agenda 2017, is the same. We have been looking at research, trying hard to work towards, um, providing our staff with good support so that they can provide high-quality instruction for our students. And so I'd like to encourage you to think about those connections as, uh, we go through our presentation. I pushed the wrong button. Oops. I should have checked this out, Patty. Right. Yeah, but it's moving around. There. Okay, what am I doing wrong? Oh, there, got it. Okay, sorry about that. A new clicker that I'm not used to. So I'm giving you an overview right now just about, um, my portion on standards and instruction. And, um, in this overview, uh, we're going to connect, make a connection to the characteristics of successful adults that Dr. Hardabek shared with us, uh, a couple of board meetings ago. Review the Wisconsin Guiding Principles for Teaching and Learning on how that connects to the work we're doing. And then I'm going to just very briefly talk about the Common Core State Standards in, uh, for English Language Arts and for Mathematics. And within each one of those, help you to better understand what the characteristics are of students who are proficient in those areas. How the standards, uh, work and the content of the standards. Give you some examples of the progressions of the standards so that you can see how the rigor and relevance increases as the kids get older. And then specifically what we're doing in each one of those areas. And so if you remember from a couple of weeks ago, these are the characteristics that, uh, Dr. Hardabek shared in her presentation of successful adults. And again, this, this is developed through research. And, um, as we look at that list, I think you'll be able to see when we talk about the characteristics of those students who are proficient in ELA and in math, um, that they are very similar. If we look at Wisconsin's Guiding Principles for Teaching and Learning, you can see the six focus areas, um, for this. And in looking through the list, there are a couple of keywords that I'd really like to point out to you, because that will help to make the connections with the work that we are doing. And if we look at number three, purposeful assessment. Assessment is, is a big word for us right now, uh, at the state level, but also at the classroom level. And how we work together around common assessments to help our students, help understand what our students know. And what it is that we need to do to be able to support them to achieve to high levels. The other one is in, uh, the other word that I think is, is really important for us is that, uh, in number four, collaborative. We know that, uh, and research shows that when teachers collaborate together around those assessment, around that assessment data, um, good things can happen for our kids. Uh, the rest of them are important as well, but I really think right now, in our district, um, our focus is really, uh, making connections with that assessment through collaboration. So when we look at the English Language Arts, uh, Common Core State Standards, uh, I don't know if you've taken the time to read them. I know we, we have done some presentations on the Common Core State Standards. And it takes quite a while to really dig into them and understand them and how they are structured so that you can make sense of them. And when we think about English Language Arts and the broader, uh, concept of English Language Arts, we know that there are many different, um, areas for that. Uh, when we think about the Common Core Standards, we have reading, writing, speaking, and listening. But within reading, for example, we have the state standards for literature. And we have the state standards for, um, informational text and for foundational skills. And so there are several different sets of standards within the standards that all fit together to help prepare those students. When we think about those kids that are, are proficient in English Language Arts when they graduate, we can see these, um, core areas that run throughout the standards. We want to help encourage our standards and teach our, uh, teach our students to, uh, demonstrate independence, for example. And so, once the instruction is provided, we're giving them opportunities to be independent and practice what they have learned. If you look at the fourth bullet, comprehend as well as critique. Not only do we want them to understand what it is they're reading and learning about, but we want them to be critical thinkers and ask questions about what they're reading and what they're learning. So that they can, uh, really help to understand the different perspectives that come to that. And then that's in the last bullet is very clear. We want them to, to be able to understand the different perspectives of the kids that they are learning with, of the authors of the text of the world around them. And so those pieces are very important. When we think about the, uh, English Language Arts Standards, we, we have what we call our anchor standards. And these are the anchor standards for reading, and those are, are four broader areas. And these, these are core to the standards K-12. And so within each grade level, in the standards for reading, you're going to find, um, standards that run throughout. And they, they increase in complexity, um, as they go through the grade levels. And these broader areas are key ideas and details, craft and structure, you can read, um, for yourself. Uh, an important one is the range of reading and the level of text complexity. And that's what really helps our students to grow and to move forward is, um, and so it's important for our teachers to understand, you know, things like text complexity and what that means. And how the increasing text complexity helps our kids to increase their skills and their achievement when it comes to reading. This, of course, does not relate to writing, um, or, or some of the other standards, because the speaking and listening standards, for example, these are just for reading. Uh, the areas of writing and the other areas have their own anchor standards. And so when we think about that then, and we think about a progression, and this is, this is for reading, literature. And if we look throughout the grade levels, I've selected just various, um, standards here that can show, help to illustrate the complexity and the rigor, the increased, increased rigor that goes along with the standards. So when we start with a kindergartner, and we're, we're starting with that very basic standard of with prompting and support, ask and answer questions about key details in a text. And if you can imagine a classroom, a kindergarten classroom, and how often those children are sitting around their teacher and being read to and interacting with text. And, and then what we're trying to do through that instruction is to help, um, provide them with support so that they can begin to ask and answer the questions about the text. You can see the differences as we move up the grade levels. For example, at grade three then, they're demonstrating their understanding of a text. And they refer and connect back to the text. By fifth grade, they're quoting from the text accurately and then explaining what it says, again, to draw back to the text. In eighth grade, they're citing the specific evidence that most strongly supports their analysis. And then by grades 11 and 12, they are getting into the analysis of the text and what it says. But you can see how it builds on the same type of understanding as we go from kindergarten all the way through grade 12. They become more complex, the critical thinking increases each step of the way. And so our task is to help to support, our task in teaching and learning is to help support our teachers and our administrators to be able to collaborate together. To understand what these standards are and what they mean for our students and their instruction and their assessment. And so what we are doing, um, in our district is, is a whole variety of things. And we didn't just, um, find out about the Common Core one day and decide to start doing these things. Many of the things we had already begun. And so it was helpful for us because, um, the, the Common Core really helped us now to pull everything together, along with the other aspects of Agenda 2017. So that, um, we could help to see connections and make connections, um, so that we weren't, uh, feeling like everything was added onto our plate. Instead, it's how does it all connect together? And so professional development has been a really big focus for us. Not only training in the research-based instructional strategies, but also in the PLCs and the professional learning communities. Next, this week, actually, we have a group of teacher leaders, um, some of our literacy leaders from the grade levels and schools, and also our literacy coaches. That are going to be working with a DPI consultant who is going to help them, uh, it's kind of a train-the-trainer model, to learn how to unpack the standards and then repack the standards.
Could you explain what that means? I never figured out what.
I certainly will.
Unpacking and repacking.
Unpacking and repacking. It's a process, and it's a process, it's a process to take the standard apart and really identify what does this mean for our kids? What does it not only mean for the students in front of me at my grade level? What have they had to learn before they come to my grade level? And what are they going to learn afterwards? And then putting the standard back together so that we can really have a strong comprehension of what that means for our kids. So what are the skills they need coming in before I can help them achieve this standard? And then where are they headed down the road? And so, uh, the process, and I haven't been through the process myself, but the process is one that, once you've done this with a few standards, it almost becomes a new way of thinking for teachers when they look at a standard. I think, when I think back, uh, to my years in the classroom and we had the model academic standards, and yes, this is going to address this standard, but we really didn't ha, ta- Standards, and yes, this is going to address this standard, but we really didn't take the time to take it apart and unpack it and figure out what that really meant. So that's where the collaboration piece comes in, because we have that collaboration within a grade-level team to really understand, okay, so this standard is what this means, and this is how we're going to help our kids to reach that standard. And so these people, our teacher leaders that are going to be working with the DPI consultant, then, specifically the lit coaches, I know, and I'm guessing some of the literacy leaders will join them, will be training our staff, then, and working with our staff to help them understand this process in January, when we have our Professional Development Day. And so they will be meeting with grade levels, and grade levels will be unpacking and repacking standards together so they can have the common collaboration and the discussion about what this really means for our kids. And then the literacy leaders and the lit coach in the building will be able to support that continued work at the grade levels when they return. And so it's really developing a deeper understanding of what the standards mean for our kids. And then, once we understand what they really mean and how we need to provide instruction for them, then we can develop those Common Formative Assessments so that we can progress monitor and assess the kids along the way, and change instruction appropriately to help them achieve. And so that, of course, is why we're focused on the formative assessments, but we know that in doing so, we are also preparing our students, then, to be successful in the smarter-balanced assessment that you will hear Jim talk more about.
Could you share your handbag, Boyle? Did you have a question?
Yes, I had a question. So am I to kind of look at this as we are strengthening the vertical alignment between levels, pre-K-12, to really know the developmental sequence of what kids need to know at all the levels, but not just being level-specific, we've got the big picture at all levels?
Correct. And there have been documents, the slide that I showed you with the progressions, there have been documents created for all the standards, and I'll refer to that a little bit in math as well, where a large part of the unpacking and repacking is really looking at, okay, in this area of reading, here's what it looks like in kindergarten, in first grade, in second grade, in third grade, in fourth grade, in fifth grade. And then because we now know and understand how to unpack those standards, they can really dissect, for lack of a better word, what those kids have learned prior to coming and what they're going to learn afterwards.
I often looked at it as, at the preschool level, we were always very aware of the developmental milestones of kids from birth through age five, and it wasn't a scary thing. So I look at the Common Core as kind of being that continuum all the way to grade 12. And to me, that's not scary at all. That's information we all need to know. So thank you.
It is helpful. When we think about the professional learning community collaboration, we think about, okay, we have our teachers, and one of our researchers that is near and dear to our heart, when, with professional learning communities, Tim Canold, who is a math educator, you know, his phrase is, the grade level is a grain, or the instructional team is a grain size of change. And so when we think about that collaboration being a rich opportunity at the grade level, that happens with a lot of support in a lot of different ways. For example, our literacy coaches, also our professional learning community. So they are continually learning together to improve their skill and their craft so that they can support those instructional teams back at the building. Literacy leaders are grade-level representatives of every grade in every school that also are forming as a professional learning community, so that we can not only provide consistency for all students in our district, across the district, but we can learn from each other and take that information back to our grade levels. And then, of course, the grade-level team is really, really where the action is at with the Common Formative Assessments, the collaboration around that, and making instructional decisions based on where their kids are at. We've also worked really hard over the past four years with our multi-level system of support, or response to intervention, probably is a more familiar term to you. Response to intervention now kind of refers to the academic portion of it, PBIS, the behavior portion. But when we think about a multi-level system of support, that's all-inclusive of both the academics and the behaviors. We have progress monitoring systems in place. We still have work to do to clarify the criteria and better, become more systematic in our response to students and their learning. We have problem-solving teams in our schools that are at all different levels of the continuum, but we work with our core MLSS teams, multi-level system of support teams, to improve that process as well. And then we really are developing a map, so to speak, of research-based interventions that our staff will feel confident to be able to turn to, instead of saying, well, I know this student is struggling here, what do I really need to do with them? And then, of course, curricular alignment within the program materials and also the documents, so that we have clearly identified learning targets and assessments within our framework that can help to support that learning. So that's a sneak peek at English Language Arts. Now, if we think about math, and the language used with the standards is a little bit different in math. Math is a whole different content area. These are characteristics of a math-proficient student. And these eight statements and focus areas, what we call, we say they are the practice standards in math. And these practice standards are continuous throughout the math standards, so that, beginning in kindergarten all the way through grade 12, we want our students to make sense of problems and persevere in solving them, to be able to model with mathematics and attend to precision. So these are what every teacher at every grade level is focused on when it comes to practice, the practice of math. And, you know, we have found, at the elementary level and at the middle school level, and I'm guessing the high school level, I'm just not as familiar with that, that our teachers are really, you know, grabbing onto these practice standards and thinking about them and talking about them and applying them in the work that they do. When we think about the progression of the math standards, it looks a little bit different. Math doesn't necessarily go all the way K-12, because the levels of math have different focuses along the way. For example, if you look at number and operations in base 10, you can see that those standards go K through 5. Once we hit the middle level, we have ratios and proportional relationships and the number system, and then when we get to high school, we have number and quantity. And so really, if you look at geometry, geometry goes K-12. But you can see in measurement and data, again, it's K-5, and then stats and probability in middle school, with stats and probability in the high school. So it looks a little bit different. The true foundation, what we have learned is, the true foundation for math is really that counting and cardinality in kindergarten. And we found that students in second and third grade who are struggling and grades even higher, you know, sometimes they just don't have that foundational building and understanding of counting and cardinality. And so, you know, what we are doing now is helping our teachers to understand that. We're identifying assessments that will help us identify if that is an area that's missing with a student who is older, and then what do we do about it with our interventions? And so it was a little bit more challenging for me to put together some progressions in math, because I really wanted to paint a K-12 picture for you, and the standards have a little bit more content to them. And so this is a math progression example in operations and algebraic thinking. And so if you look at kindergarten, you know, it sounds pretty simple, understanding addition as putting together and adding to, and understanding subtraction as taking apart and taking from. Well, when you're a kindergartner, you know, you can teach them the words, and they may be able to demonstrate something for you. But when you're in a kindergarten classroom across the course of a year, and you see the many, many different ways that they are putting together and taking apart, and the language that they're using, I had a, someone sent me an email from a teacher, and she had quoted one of her first-grade students. And of course, first graders are learning how to write. And I used to teach first grade, and so their phonetic spelling really isn't anything new to me. But I had a hard time with this one, and I finally figured out that the student was writing, "I like subtraction equations." And subtraction equations was really, that's where I struggled with the phonetic piece of it. But the comment on the part of the teacher was, you know, our kids never would have used this language at this age before. And then I saw somebody else, another person, a parent, showed me her child, first grader, who was doing the same kinds of things, you know? So the language that comes with our math has really taken on a whole new level of rigor for kids to understand. You can see, then, as they move to grade two, they're using larger numbers, they're representing problems in different ways, they're working with equal groups of objects, because now we're starting to help them gain that foundation for multiplication. And then by fourth grade, they're using all four, addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division, to solve problems, and they are really beginning to better understand multiplication and division with factors, or, excuse me, multiplication with factors and multiples. And now we're beginning to analyze the problems, or, excuse me, patterns.
Chris?
Yes.
So you're finding that the oral, the intentionality of the oral language within instruction has really made it be much richer in what the kids are using at the, and we're seeing that already?
Oh, yes.
Cool?
Oh, yes, we are seeing that already. In sixth grade, then, you can see how now they're taking what they've learned with their arithmetic, and they're beginning to apply it to algebra, and the algebraic expressions, analyzing quantitative relationships. And then eighth grade, again, it increases in the rigor, more analysis. And then by the time we get to high school, it was a challenge for me to figure out what to share with you to show that progression. But here, in high school, this particular math standard is algebra and functions. And so you can see, then, the complexity that they are beginning to apply what they've learned in the earlier grades. So when we think about what are we doing in math, and what have we been doing to make connections to the Common Core, you know, program alignment has been a big area in math with the adoption of new materials, both at the elementary level and the middle level. Math expressions, the teachers are finding that their kids know a lot more than they thought they could learn. And as you indicated, the language that they are using and the language that they are learning is exciting. And they, I heard, listened to a teacher the other day in a collaborative session say, "I trust the math program, so I can focus on reading where our scores really need it." And so to hear a teacher say that unsolicited, that she really trusted the math instruction and the program materials, was really exciting. At the middle levels, big ideas is very similar to math expressions, and we'll meet the kids where they're at and help them to move forward and continue on as they get ready for high school. We've done an awful lot of professional development, not only in collaboration, again, but also with the math expressions and the research-based instructional strategies. Those instructional strategies have happened through Professional Development Wednesdays and are applied to all the different areas. We also have, with the assessments, we're looking, we progress, have a progress monitoring system in place, pre-K-8, and we're developing Common Formative Assessments, again, and the new program materials lend themselves to that very nicely with the pieces that they have as part of the program. And so we're confident that we are preparing our kids for smarter balanced, although they will need the technical aspects of preparing for that test. And again, we're building capacity. We've identified math coaches in each of our elementary buildings. There are classroom teachers who go, who are, who have volunteered to become teacher leaders, and in exchange for that, they have some release time for collaboration in additional professional development. And then math leaders, again, in each grade level, like the literacy leaders, and also the grade-level teams. And then the multi-level system of support. And I know that they are working with professional development and collaboration at the middle levels. And at the high school levels, I'm, I am just not as well-versed with the specifics of what they are doing. So I think that's the end of my portion, and I would.
Chris, could I point?
Entertain any questions?
Yeah, great. Could we go back to the process standards for a minute?
We can try.
About five slides back. I didn't want to cause trouble.
No, the trouble is not with you.
I really, I just wanted to point something out, if we can do it.
Okay, Seacham, I get that far.
Maybe, Jim, you can.
Yes, can you get us back to that slide, please?
I did this on purpose, just to give us a break.
No, I think it's a new controller, actually. Do it with the mom. Wow, that would have been easy.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
Thank you.
Move forward. There you go. I just want to point out something, Chris, because, you know, I have looked at these a lot, and it's more of my pointing out for the public, you know, a lot of public thinks math is memorizing multiplication tables. And I'd like to point out that that is in here, for example, attending to precision, right? And solving problems. They do need to know multiplication problems, and that's one of, kind of the myths I hear, that that's being forgotten, and it's not. But there's so much more to understanding math, and those other process standards are those things, actually, understanding what you're doing, interpreting what you're doing, and so forth. And I just wanted to point that out, that these represent all of those things.
Correct.
So.
Yes, thank you for doing that. That's very true. And we find that it's combining all of those critical thinking skills and all of these practice standards that help them to become most fluent with their multiplication and facts.
Right, yes, thank you. Other comments, questions from the board, from Chris? Great, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Now that we can use the clicker. It's yours, Jim. Thank you.
As I'm getting this up, I know Chris mentioned about the high school. The high school is actually, in their third year of rolling and implementation, two years ago, they did Algebra I in the College Preparatory Math Program aligned with the Common Core Standards. Last year is Geometry, and this year is Algebra II. So that work actually started prior to the K-8 program, but it's been rolled out over multiple years, so. So as Chris alluded to several times, there are the assessment pieces that come with the state, with, that are state expectations. And so you have a nice patchwork of different assessments up there that we're going to walk you through. You've heard many of these before, but we'll give you a little bit more context of those as they're associated with the Agenda 2017. Some of these are directly part of Agenda 2017. Some of these are actually required through state statute, and they're not actually part of the DPI's plan, but they're actually an expectation through our legislature. So I'll kind of show you a couple of how that kind of plays in. And the biggest ones that we know are the WKC and these two right here, Wisconsin Alternative Assessments for Students with Disabilities. These are a couple that are hanging around mostly through state statute, so we'll go to that in just a moment. So when you saw this, when you saw this picture, you see a lot. And so the idea is, about a year ago or less, I had another slide similar to this that I actually talked about, the percentage of time spent assessing. So you see a lot of assessments, but it's important to recognize that our students are not spending all this time in assessments. We have a lot of administrative and support issues as adults connected with assessments, because so many of them are new. They have technical components to them that are, that are, have a, it's a level complexity we've never had to deal with before. In the past, you used to get test booklets, you used to get labels from DPI, you'd hand out books to kids, you slap test labels on them, and out they'd go, and it'd be pretty easy. Now we have systems where we have to load student data, we have to make sure our wireless is connecting with all devices. All these pieces have to come together just right. So there's a large administrative end, but from the student end, they don't see that. They really aren't seeing a large change in the amount of assessment time that they have in the past. And we have looked at this before, and it's a fraction of a percent of their school year. And so you can see, pre-K through 12, there's actually a pattern to this. Most of it is around literacy, and as you know, our conversations earlier, the critical importance of literacy. These first four years, going all the way to pre-K, are associated with the PALS literacy screener. And then when we get into grades three through eight, you'll see the smarter-balanced assessment. And then when we get into grades three through eight, you'll see the Smarter Balance Assessment. Students that do not take the Smarter Balance Assessment, and this is in readings, reading in math, reading in mathematics, if you are not taking that, you'll take the Dynamic Learning Maps, and that's our 1% of our student body that is significantly cognitively disabled. So, it'll either be Smarter Balance or Dynamic Learning Maps. We're going to talk about WKC in a moment. When you get to the high school, it's ASPIRE, which is an ACT product for the ninth and 10th grade years, and then ACT itself, and then Work Keys, which is a workplace readiness assessment that is also run by ACT. And it is going to assess three areas that we'll talk about in just a few moments. But again, for that significantly cognitively disabled student, Dynamic Learning Maps continues all the way through grade 11. So, we have Dynamic Learning Maps runs all the way through here for that group of students. For reading and mathematics, we have Smarter Balance Assessment. ASPIRE and ACT pick up English, they pick up writing and science. And then over here, you'll see Wisconsin Alternative Assessments and WKCE, and that is just for Science and Social Studies, and that's through state statute. We are still required through state statute in grades four, eight, and 10, to give that assessment in Social Studies and Science, and so that's why that is still on the table. Again, each individual student, it's, it's not a significant portion of their year, even though it looks like quite a bit, yeah?
Can I ask a question? Will the WKCE and the, and the WAA, will that go away eventually?
Not until, not until state statute says they go away.
Okay.
So, when, when we brought out Smarter Balance Assessment and ASPIRE, that picked up the reading and mathematics, which then now, we no longer do that with WKCE. They did not carry English over as well, but they still, it didn't satisfy that requirement, statutory requirement for Science and Social Studies. And until that is, until either the statute's changed or
I'll let you know in legislative update.
Exactly. So it's just, it's just hanging out there, and it's just meeting an obligation. So when we think about, and so that requirement is, is not a DPI Agenda 2017 piece, but it's just part of meeting our, our obligation to the state. So, Smarter Balance, it is online, it is grades three through eight, and again, focuses on reading and mathematics, and does replace that WKC, as I mentioned, and it is on the school report card. It's important to note that the school report card final construction of how the assessments will be used has not been determined yet by the Department of Public Instruction. We can, we can, we know it's going to involve reading and mathematics, but we have some new assessments, and cut scores, and all that work is still being finalized, so it should be in line with the type of data we saw this past year, but with anything new, we'll wait to see how that turns out in late summer. Again, this is the high school version, so ASPIRE is grades nine and 10, and actually, this is a spring assessment. We just gave, a few weeks ago, for grade nine, we gave the ASPIRE, and why just in nine for the fall? It's a statutory requirement through our legislature, so, but that was our first trial run at running a, a high-stakes, online assessment, and we did great. I mean, we, we really, it was, it was just at the high school, but the lesson we learned from this is to make these things come together, these assessments come together, really requires a team of people. If you can envision a room with, like, someone who's good with the, with, with running student data, all the way down to the counselor, who is really good at organizing and proctoring day-of test instructions for teachers, and then everything else in between, it's really a phenomenal effort, and we have a team likewise for Smarter Balance Assessment, and, and we have some smaller teams for some of the other assessments we're going to show you. So these are really big team efforts to make, to pull these things off, and we have outstanding staff to make that happen. So the ASPIRE here is grade nine and 10, and then the ACT and Work Keys. The Work Key, the ACT is English reading, science, math, and writing. So it is the ACT with writing. It is the same ACT that will be, we, we, if you recall, we used this in the spring, we, we ran a pilot of this, and now it's required across the state. That is the same ACT, and those scores can be used by students for post-secondary admissions. The Work Keys is a workplace readiness assessment. There are multiple assessments, but the state is only using three of them, and that's locating information, reading for information, and applied mathematics. So it's, and these are going to be given on back-to-back days in March. It's still paper and pencil, though, so it's still going, they're still doing the traditional mode on these, even though the ninth and 10th is electronic. And again, this will again replace WKCE and the reading and math on that report card. Dynamic Learning Maps, again, this is for that significantly cognitively disabled population, and again, this is three through 11. We also had to run this for grade nine this fall, again, to meet statutory obligations. And again, we, this went really, really well. Joel Democ really did a great job leading this group for the district, and the training on this was significant. It was, it's a very, it's a very intensive process to train staff, and we had a great technical backend as well. So it's, this, this was a good trial run for us, but it's going to go for, that was just grade nine. So we had a nice opportunity to test it out at one level, and then we'll be doing it across three through 11. Mentioned earlier, this is just Science and Social Studies, will not be used on the, on the school report card, but is required statutory requirement for eight and 10, and this was actually just conducted this last week. Traditionally, this tends to run the end of October, right before Halloween, spills into about two to three weeks into November, and it was done like that in under a week, so it was pretty quick because it's been scaled back. It used to be grades three through 10, it's now four, eight, and 10. It used to be multiple areas as well as Science and Social Studies, but it's just this now. So those are the things, again, the first ones were going to be on the report card. WKC will not, PALS is not either. PALS is not on our report card, it is a screener, 4K through grade two, it's led in the fall and spring, and it's a literacy screener. It is expected that we still, that we do this through the state, through Agenda 2017, as a way to intervene with students that are showing signs of literacy intervention require, or that they need interventions. And Assets is another one that is not on our school report card, but is an assessment from the state. This, this is our last year, it's going to be paper and pencil, next year is, is going to be online, and this is for our English learners. It really helps get that baseline level of where our students are in their, in their literacy, or their English proficiency. And this is, again, something that's not for all students, just for the select students that, that English is not their primary language, and again, is moving to be electronic next year. So, that's it for the assessment piece. I'm going to hand over to Kay, but if you have any quick assessment questions? I've kind of hit you with these assessment ones a few times, so, yeah.
Jim, for PALS, have, have the staff found it useful as a feedback for, because you said it's really for finding out issues or problems?
Yep, and this is, actually, we have an, we are also allowed to do a optional screener in the winter, and, and many of our staff do do that because it does provide a, a large amount of data for us to really, it, it is a very solid intervention tool. As a matter of fact, many intervention, or, I mean, screening tools, many screening tools are not very good at diagnosing. This one actually does a pretty decent job to help us identify some issues to, to work on with our students. So we've had very positive feedback from our staff.
Great, thank you, Jim, appreciate it.
Okay, so, in terms of Agenda 2017 and preparing staff for meeting the needs of students, one of the big components, obviously, is educator effectiveness. A lot of what I'm going to show you is going to be quick review for you, because we gave you a large presentation about educator effectiveness back in July, in fact, on the 21st, at that board meeting. At that point in time, we shared the requirements of educator effectiveness, the steps that the district had taken to that point in time to provide professional development opportunities and training for both faculty and administrators. We additionally shared the information that was related to the annual grant related to this, and the cost of the TeachScape licenses, and we presented and received approval from you for the employee handbook language modifications that needed to go into effect for this year based upon the new evaluation system and growth model tools for educator effectiveness. So all of that happened back in July of this past year, as we presented all of that foundational information to you about educator effectiveness. But, the work didn't stop there. So since July, what is it that we've done related to educator effectiveness, and we've done quite a bit? At this point in time, we continue to have some ongoing challenges with TeachScape, and that's not just here in Eau Claire, that's been on a, a large-scale basis with TeachScape, so it's not specific to us or what we have working here with our network. We're really focused regarding TeachScape with not letting technology be the barrier for what it is we're trying to do with educator effectiveness and the growth model for our staff. So at this point in time, we developed a workaround for our staff so that we weren't focused on technology issues, where we tried to keep the focus on what it is we need to do for educator effectiveness, and the goals that our staff are working on with their supervisors. And so, we've kind of taken that technology glitch out of the picture at this point in time, and just said, until we're sure that TeachScape has things flawless on their end, we're not going to worry about the TeachScape component, and we're going to go kind of Fred Flintstone era and do things paper and pencil. And we're not going to require all the components of TeachScape because we're worried about that impeding people's growth in what it is they're working to do for educator effectiveness. So we've developed that workaround, and it's allowed staff to be able to continue to work toward their goals and their SLOs for educator effectiveness, and not get hung up on that technology component. The last thing we wanted was for anybody to have any more hiccups in this process and create more anxiety, especially when it was something as simple as technology. So we're sure to create a workaround for that, to try to ease some angst with people. Additionally, since July, we've got building administrators who've successfully passed their TeachScape certification. We're looking at well over 60 hours of both training and study for each individual administrator to get to that point. There is a lot of work involved in that, both individually and from groups, studying together, training together, going through simulations to be able to get to the point where they were certified to be able to move forward from that standpoint. So that was a lot of work that was done on everybody's part to get to that level. Additionally, we've got principals and teachers that have written their EEPs, which includes one SLO. For their SLOs at the elementary level, it's a focus on their school improvement plan and their professional learning community work. There's a big focus at that level on trying to keep a consistent flow within the building so that we didn't have people kind of being outliers. We thought, at least in this, especially in this first year, that there's kind of power in numbers, and so if everybody's working together toward the same types of common goals, it would be easier for people and more efficient for people if you could have that conversation around your grade level and your professional learning communities. So they have their one SLO and their one PPG that they've been working on, and to this point, everybody has those written and moving forward. Yes, go ahead.
Could you, just for everyone involved, say what the abbreviations stand for?
Certainly.
Like, I don't know, one I don't know is PPG.
Yep, the PPG is the, the professional, professional performance goal. And so, that, that's, so that everybody has their own goal in terms of what it is that they're going to do from their individual standpoint. SLOs are either a student learning objective, if you're a teacher who works directly with students, or, like, for an administrator, it would be a school learning objective, how's your school going to move forward? SIP is your school improvement plan, and then PLC is the professional learning community. Sure. So for anybody who isn't in education, that's kind of crash course, and ABC's 101, yep. So additionally, we've got evaluators who are currently meeting with staff to review their, their EEPs, which is the educator effectiveness plan that, that each of them have. They're working to schedule both formal and mini observations, though all of those scheduling's are being set at this point in time. And then we've got discussion and collection of evidence, data points, and artifacts are currently going on. That's an ongoing process throughout the year, and we're just in the very beginning stages of that at this point in time. But that's what's happening in the buildings between evaluators and staff. Upcoming events, as we look forward to what it is the next steps are, so, I don't know, I do, so this is kind of my, like, my little red light that I can show you. So we've done the orientation part, that's something we would have talked to you about back in July, developing EEPs, SLOs, and PPGs, that's all been taken care of. Currently, this is what's going on now, the EEP meeting and goal discussions, and the observations and collections of evidence, we just spoke about that. Coming up, upcoming events include this one right here, the mid-year review. That'll happen for most buildings late December to January, when staff prepare to have that mid-year review with their evaluator, and then looking at the mid-year review deep dive, I've kind of lost my little, here we go. And that part, this part right here, is when we're looking at December-January timeframe. And then as we move forward into these steps here, it continues to be more discussion and evaluation between the staff members and their supervisor, until you get into this part here, which is the very final steps before the end of the school year, where they need to have their final evaluation conference. So, there's been a lot of work that's gone on since July, when we last met about educator effectiveness. It's a learning process, and we're all still learning together. We have continued ongoing discussions with building administrators and administrators with staff on where we're at, how we can improve things, looking at communication, and next steps for planning and educating people on what those next steps are in the process, because obviously, this is the first go-around with things, and we learn something new every time we sit down at the table and talk about it. And sometimes, that's because things have changed at the state level, and we're changing as we go, but that's where, that's where everything's at with educator effectiveness.
Questions, Commissioner Hamerborn?
I have a question. I mean, it's almost hard to think about how much has been laid on as far as educator effectiveness, good things, but it's a lot. And then, can you tell me a little bit about how the PDP process, which is for licensure, and how that overlays within all of this as well? Because, and how, how are we supporting that process?
Well, the PDP process for licensure, I mean, from the state level, none of that has changed. So as staff works through their PDP, they can easily build in any component of their educator effectiveness plan into that as one of their goals. I mean, that can all very easily overlap, and in many cases, probably should. As they're looking to grow professionally, it would be an easy overlap between those.
That's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
Other questions or comments for Kay? It's a lot.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So, Superintendent Hardback, you're going to update on that?
Well, you know, again, I'll just reiterate that the school finance reform is being discussed at the state level, it's being discussed in the legislature. I can't say that at this point, that I'm aware that a great deal of progress has been made in that area, but I think that it is at least out there for the public to talk about, and to talk with their legislators about. You know, as we make our presentations in the community about the state of our budget, the questions about the revenue caps come up, and the fair funding, and we really don't have an answer for that at this point. I think that remains to be seen.
Commissioner Hamerborn?
But we're willing to take that school funding out to anybody who wants to learn about it, just had to say that.
And if I understand it right, Superintendent Evers, State Superintendent Evers' Fair Funding Formula is on the website, you can read about it, right?
Yes, he does have his fair funding plan on the website, and people can read about it, and I suppose that they, you know, could take a look at it, make a decision about whether or not they could support it, and let their legislators know.
That would be great. Okay, that was a lot, a lot of good stuff. I'm always glad to hear what's going on, especially with 2017, since it's, it's a big part of what drives what we do here, so. Okay, so next on our agenda is a, oh, do we have any public comments on the committee report? I forget that, any comments on that? On the Agenda 2017? Okay, all right. So, next we have an update on the graduation requirements, we'll give you a chance to set up here. I'm going to try to click her in the mouse.
I'm not sure what I'm going to try, yes.
All right.
I'll just keep it on this screen. Right, so you hear about standards and, and the performance expectations and assessments, but fundamentally, still, to graduate from high school, you need to earn credits. And the state has recently, in the past year and a half, has increased the state graduation requirements from two credits of math to three credits of science. Two credits of math and two credits of science, three credits of math and three credits of science. What I'm going to do is walk you through a standard schedule, and what the implications would be of this increase for the student who's taking minimum level of would be of this increase for the student who's taking minimum level of courses in the school district to graduate from the Eau Claire School District and what implication that will be on their program, what implications that has for FTE, and then ultimately, what the cost is to consider changes to our graduation requirements. Regardless of increasing or not increasing graduation requirements, students will need to take three credits of math and three credits of science, beginning with the current sophomores or the class of 2017. As it is now, as you can see on the left, through the class of 2016, this is a standard schedule for a student who will begin earning high school credit at the start of their high school career. Four credits of English, three credits of social studies, two and a half credits of science. I have that asterisk because currently, the state has two credits of science for a graduation requirement. Eau Claire, for a long time, has required two and a half credits. So we're already a half a credit toward that increased requirement. Two credits of math, one and a half credits of physical education, a half credit of health. Again, I have that asterisk because in the Eau Claire District, we offer a ninth grade health course that meets the graduation requirement. But the state also allows health to be earned at the middle school if you have a semester of health in seventh or eighth grade without having a credit in the high school. But we do have a credit of high school health. And that would, to meet the 22-credit minimum requirement that we have in the school district, require eight and a half elective or program of study credits. If a student were to max out all of their elective or program of study credits, they could have up to 14 and a half credits over the course of four years. Beginning with their current sophomores, again, the class of 2017, the English requirement remains at four, social studies at three, science goes up a half credit to three, math increases by one credit to three, physical education remains the same at one and a half, health remains the same at a half. And again, to meet the minimum 22-credit requirement, it would drop the number of elective or program of study courses a student would be required to take to seven, with 13 being the max. So I thought I would just walk you through, again, four years of courses of what it would look like for a student to earn the minimum 22 credits currently and what would be the difference with the current sophomore class with the increased requirements. As you can see, for ninth grade, there would be no difference. Students would take the same sequence of courses, whether with the increased science and math requirement or not. Tenth grade, again, the same holds true. These are the courses that a standard student would take going through our scope and sequence. In eleventh grade, we dropped from six credits of required courses per year, per student in eleventh grade to five credits per year. The difference here is, beginning with the sophomores, all students would be required to take that additional credit of math, and typically, that would be Algebra II Trigonometry. Then the senior year, the same holds true. Students would no longer need to take a math if they were not interested, but they would have to pick up that additional half credit of science. So that would result in the additional science credit their senior year. Keep in mind, I just put this through as if everybody was taking things in sequence, there are multiple ways that you could do this, but this is what it would look like. And then again, you can see, meeting the minimum requirement, the student, starting as a sophomore, would be expected to take perhaps a half-credit less elective or program of study. This is where the implications come in. Basically, the FTE impact for math and science, and I'm using data from the class of 2014, it's been pretty consistent over the years. Currently, 60% of our students would be in need of an additional half-credit or more in science. Given, on average, 27 students per class, that would result in approximately a 2.0 FTE increase over those two-year period of time. Math, we currently have 20% of our students would be in need of an additional half-credit or more. And again, given 27 students per class on average, that would equate to a 1.0 FTE increase to meet the new graduation requirements. When I talk about these increases, I want to reemphasize that, again, this is to meet the minimum standard that the district currently has for graduation requirement. So the question that the board will need to consider is, do we maintain or increase the Eau Claire School District graduation requirements? Again, using the 2014 graduating class, approximately 200 or 28% of seniors graduate with fewer than 24 credits. Stated another way, 72% of our students are already meeting a 24-credit graduation standard or greater. The approximate FTE impact of that 24-credit requirement, or those 200 students, is approximately 3 FTE or slightly less. At $77,500 for a salary and benefit package, that dollar amount over a two-year period of time would be, as you can see, a little bit over $232,000.
Tim, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you have a feel for that 28% of seniors who graduate with fewer than 24 credits, that extra time in their schedule, is it just study hall or are they doing other things? Or, you know, what's that filled with? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yep. The vast, well, of that 28%, the majority of students who do not have a full schedule are taking study halls. Or as a senior, if they apply and qualify for senior release, they're taking senior release.
Okay, okay.
There are some who are in internships, there are some who are on other types of work programs, but the majority of them are not involved in those activities.
That wasn't really what I was getting at. They were doing other things that seemed to be appropriate for them, but they're not getting credit for it. It would, you know, I'd worry about raising the credit requirement, is what I'm saying.
And in that program of study...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Wendy had a question.
Do we know how many students are repeating classes? Because it's possible that if they've failed previous classes, that they might be doing something over again?
Yeah, that, right now, for students who need to earn, make up credit, they're either doing that in the summer or they're taking that as off-campus, not part of the educational program during the school year.
But they could take it. They could retake a course in place of one of their electives.
So the question looks at, again, if we were to look at the two requirements of credits, maintaining the 22-credit, again, that would be freshmen and sophomore taking six credits a year, juniors and seniors taking five. Or increasing it to 24 credits, on average, students taking six out of seven courses a year, you can see what the difference would be. And you could see that maintaining the 22, because of the increased requirements, students would have at a minimum be required to take seven elective or program of study courses. If it went to 24 at a minimum, they would take nine credits of elective or program of study courses. Keeping in mind, program of study courses or electives are the fine arts, business and marketing, technology education, engineering and science, family consumer ed, world language. In sum, math and science FTE will increase regardless of the Eau Claire School District graduation requirements, simply because of the increased expectations. 15% of our students take a minimum, would take a minimum of one and a half fewer electives or program of study courses if we maintain the 22-credit graduation requirements. Stated another way, 15% of our seniors graduate with just the minimum of 22 credits. And then approximately 3.0 FTE will be needed over the next two years if the graduation requirement is raised to 24. It's hard to say exactly the FTE because we don't know how equally distributed those courses would be, but it would be no more than three, somewhere between two and three.
So I, at some point, we'll have to decide this, it sounds like. I'm just not sure how to decide it because it's not the FTE that concerns me, it's just, I'm not quite sure how to decide what's best for the kids. You know, are these extra electives required, is that beneficial for them? Do they find benefit even though it may be forcing them to take it or what? And I don't know how to answer that question right now.
I actually can weigh in on this a little bit. I think increasing the requirement for graduation would actually be like a burden on some students because some students are in the internships and programs outside of school, so they would have less time to do those and they'd be less likely to do them because it decreases the amount of time that you have for a study hall in your schedule so you can get your homework done and not be stressed after school. So some things that I've heard about other districts doing is allowing, like, the gym requirement could be, like, decreased for students who are in sports because they're staying active and they're meeting the physical fitness requirements. But I understand that part of that is a health, like, education portion of it, that is like physical education, education? Yeah. Yeah, okay. So I could understand seeing like a class in wellness and then having the students who are involved in athletics have a lesser required number of credits that way, so they could still take the electives that they'd like to take. Because adding required classes also makes the electives go. Like, you can have fewer electives. And for a lot of students who maybe aren't planning on going to college after high school, but they're planning on doing an internship or planning on going straight into the job field, courses that are electives could be really important. So I think really considering that would be helpful. And also, this is just kind of a personal one, getting a math credit could also be easier for some students like myself. I took algebra in seventh grade but did not receive a credit for it, even though it is a high school level course, since I received a geometry credit in eighth grade for high school. So if I'm taking a high school level course, I feel like that should be given a high school credit, even though you weren't taking it in high school and it's still at that level. So I think there are alternative ways to earn credits that could be looked at so students could still take the electives that they want.
Great, thank you. Did you have a comment?
I would just say a couple of things. One is that the state has some pretty specific guidelines in terms of how credits and, that are, the high school credits earned in middle school can be computed into what you do in high school. So there is a requirement, regardless of what you've had in middle school, that you must take those three credits of math and science during the high school year. So that's one thing. To your point about electives, you know, moving from 22 credits to 24 credits really does require students to take elective courses or it does provide room in their program of study for those elective courses. And, you know, it may be for many students, a one-time thing to be able to explore electives in art, music, the sciences, world language. So we want to make sure that, that the requirements are not so, so easy that we kind of disincentivize students from taking a more rigorous course of study and a broader course of study than what is just required by the credits. So I think that's one thing that we're going to have to think about and probably get some feedback about.
Others? Commissioner Johnson.
I think Hannah made some excellent points, I really appreciate her weighing in so quickly and willingly. I guess one concern I would have in minimizing the number of study halls, having kids have six courses and one study hall, you know, if they're taking AP classes or a math class, they're spending that whole study hall in one class and not having the opportunity to work on their other subjects or access the tutoring center or connect with teachers. Or maybe, you know, looking at, I only have one study hall, maybe I won't take an AP class because I know that's going to be a huge burden. So I guess my initial gut reaction is, we're already expecting so much of kids. And we're talking about increasing our graduation rates and I think about those, you know, kids, the 20% that are not currently taking more than two years of math or, you know, the kids that are just barely graduating and I would hate for us to, you know, kind of shut kids out of that opportunity to earn a high school diploma and move on because of that, just that little bit of extra that they may or may not actually need to be a successful adult. I guess I have one question about, when we first heard about the initial, the addition of the math and the science credits from the state, there was some information or comments about meeting that creatively. So that, you know, instead of everybody having to take Algebra II, for example, that the 20% of kids who are not currently choosing to take that extra math credit, can they get at least a portion of that in a, you know, an engineering class or a statistics class or, you know, a science credit in what would be considered elective, not necessarily the traditional track? So I would, I would be interested in knowing how we can give kids some additional exposure to math and science and meet that credit without, I guess, putting everybody through the exact same courses.
Does the state specify strongly how that's met or can you give us some feedback?
Yeah, when we, first off, we do offer courses in math and science increasingly that are taught through areas other than the traditional math and science program. When we put this out, we didn't talk about scope and sequence, we didn't talk about the overall program that the district has had in place for a period of time. We simply were looking at credits that students were required to take. So factoring in how these courses may be delivered or when they're delivered was not something we incorporated in the, in the program, but the questions that are raised, that Hannah has raised, those are under consideration and are being evaluated and assessed by the district. But we did not include awarding high school credit for students taking high school courses in middle school, nor have we talked about looking through STEM, for example, other ways of offering science and math courses, those sorts of things.
And we are looking at some of the career and technical education courses that might qualify for science, math credit.
Correct.
But those would have to be vetted through the state.
Yeah, I think those would be important questions or answers and questions to have on this. Other comments, questions about this? I know I still have to think about it for a while, how I feel about it. Commissioner Duhax.
Of course, Policy and Governance Committee is listening carefully to your remarks, so we know, know how you feel before you bring the policy forward, but continue to give us your, your thoughts on it. It's kind of troubling for some of those kids, like you said, Commissioner Johnson.
Tim, you know, the change in this requirements, was that to make it align more with what most colleges? Is that the reasoning behind the state requirement? Or maybe you don't know, but it seems to match what a lot of colleges would expect from some graduating. Is that accurate?
Yes. When, when the state came out with Agenda 2017, and this is where it fits more subtly, they realized that a student with two years of math and only two years of science is very unlikely to get, have the skills and the knowledge and the credits necessary to get into a post-secondary institution of their choice. Some would accept it, some wouldn't accept it. They also looked at statewide, interesting dynamic. When you look at our grade nine and grade 10 requirements, we expect more from our ninth and 10th grade students in terms of volume of material covered in the course of a year than we do our juniors and seniors. We expect in terms of volume and rigor of course, less from our oldest students compared to our youngest students. No other place educationally does that happen with older students compared to younger students, except here. And I don't mean here like in Eau Claire, but in the system.
Interesting observation. Commissioner Johnson.
So you could get, have freshmen and sophomores do five credits each and have juniors and seniors do six credits each?
That's what the Policy and Governance Committee will have to look at, how those expect, how those requirements are written out in the, in the district. Currently, the school district policy says ninth and 10th grade take six credits, 11th and 12th, five. But again, we didn't factor those sorts of scope and sequence questions or issues into the presentation.
And I would just point out, when you look at those programs of study that are listed there, you, you do not see world language. And to enter a competitive university, most universities require at least three credits of a world language. Also with the elective piece, many of our... piece, many of our students take music courses, they take art courses throughout their four years in, in, in high school. So that elective piece is, you know, plays a big role for a large number of our students.
I have a question for, I guess, Mr. Spindler, and that is, in advising many college students, they have to take remedial math. So if they have math their freshman and sophomore years, and then they have to take math again in college, they end up, I believe, going back to some remedial math, because they haven't been in it for quite a long time. Is that correct?
Yeah, actually, what I've seen the best predictor of your, your math course in college is if you had it the year before, your senior year. If you take it freshman year of college right away, you'll do better than just usually make it through. Yeah. Commissioner John?
I'm kind of conflicted. I like the fact that we are preparing kids to get into these institutions, because I know when I was growing up, my parents didn't look at the requirements from any institutions, because they just didn't know. And when I was trying to get in, obviously, I didn't get into the one I want right away, but I got there finally, but it took a little longer. So I like the fact that we are doing this, but then the conflicting part is, what about the 15%? Like Wendy was saying.
Commissioner Dux.
Well, has there been any work done toward changing the balance of the courses, so that the more difficult, it gets more difficult as you get to the junior and senior year?
We've begun some general discussions of what that might look like through the program of study configuration we have for the secondary program, yes. We also have our math departments at the high schools looking at what that third year of math would be. Does not have to be exactly the normal transition from Algebra II to Trigonometry. There are some other approaches that districts around the state have been, have been using, and that our, our math departments are investigating. So yes.
Hannah? Yes.
I also think that it's important to consider that the, like, largest concentration of students who are enrolled in AP courses are juniors and seniors, so their course load is more intense on average than freshmen and sophomores, because more AP courses are offered to juniors and seniors than are to freshmen and sophomores. The course load is more difficult, so I think the requirement of fewer credits is important, so that, like me last year, I had a year and a half of a study hall, and that one semester where I had two study halls was extremely helpful in me being able to maintain decent scores on my homework and tests, and having enough time to study. And I also think that having more classes your freshman and sophomore year is good, because then your junior and senior year, when more people are starting to be able to drive, it allows them to do internships, because they have more room in their schedules. And it gives them the real-world application of the knowledge they've been learning in school outside of the classroom. That's really helpful.
Thank you, Hannah. I think that points out some of the complexities of different students. Commissioner Haber.
What kind of credit are, is given for internships?
They award a half-credit or a full-credit if it goes through this course of the school year, as if they were in a regular class in the school.
Okay, and I have another question. Can I? If, if we looked at STEM, would we overlay that, or would we look at that specifically? Within, you know, we've got our new committee or whatever, what, you know, would we, would we look at STEM separately, or would we look at how it would overlay with what we already are doing?
Typically, you look at the, at the courses that would qualify as STEM courses now, and then how you could enrich that program and make it more relevant, either to the college experience or the work experience. So that could even tie into internships as well. Got it?
Commissioner Vu.
Would you be looking at voting for the 22 credits or 25, four?
Well, that's a good point. What's the deadline for this? P&amp;G should come out with it and so forth.
The, the, our current sophomores, the class of 2017, will be required to take in the Eau Claire School District an additional credit of math and a half-credit of science, whether you vote or not.
Yeah, we have, we have to be state requirements, but I mean, we're really, the question is, do we raise our total requirement, right?
Yep. Right, it really gets down to, for that 15 to 20%, do you reduce the electives they have by having them take the math and science requirement, or do you increase the graduation standard, so they have the same number of electives as they're currently taking?
Let's say we wanted to start that next fall. By when would you, would you need us to do that?
We are thinking that the Policy and Governance Committee might be ready to bring something to you in December or early January.
Oh, okay, all right. There's your answer. Any other comments, questions from the board? Okay, any public comments or questions? Well, public comments on it. Okay, we got a quiet audience tonight. Anything else? Thank you very much, Tim. Nice discussion, actually. Something I hadn't thought about very much. Okay, so our next agenda item, any requests for future agenda items from board members? Anything else? And I don't think we have any other business, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Vu. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Nice meeting.
This program was recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067, or on the web at www.cbcTV.org.